Uh, binding attorney is here and we appreciate you being here, Mr. Ben. Witness, a glad day for us and our USDA representatives are here and I know we haven't seen you. So, uh, we'll go ahead and start the day and by having our invocation. If you would please, Mr. James.
Let us pray. You're talking about having a Father. Father, we thank you for this day. Father, we thank you for all that you did. Father, I ask you coming to this, this meeting. Guide us, lead us and keep us. Just asking you some of you this night. Amen.
And then, the old call, uh, I got a call from Kevin Park and he's got a health department inspection or some kind of inspection going on. I told him we'd call him if we needed him, but we do have a call. So, uh, uh, we can go from here without having to call him over the phone. Anyway, I share one number absolutely wrong. Adoption of agenda, I have no changes, believe me.
Doug just told us a curve. He put it on front and back.
We're trying to get the budget in line. Adoption of agenda, do I hear a motion to, oh, I'm sorry, Carl. Did anybody heard from Carl?
I haven't.
Okay. Mark him absolutely wrong here. I'm sorry. Adoption of agenda, agenda is submitted. Your motion to accept?
Second.
Second?
Second.
All in favor say so by saying aye. Any opposed?
Who did the first?
James.
Who did the second?
Jimmy.
Well, we had two, so we had a bunch of them. Okay, approval of minutes, everybody getting their minutes?
No, nobody got their minutes. I didn't have a chance to do them because we had stuff running. I'm gonna do them today and send them to you. Get a chance, try to look at them today and let me know and I'll re-send if there's any changes that you need to make. I'm sorry, but I can notice them for it. I just kinda got all of them.
Okay. We'll pass on the minutes and go to approval of expenditures. The expenditures are on the table for your review. Uh, I don't know of anything that's out of the ordinary this month. I've talked to both superintendents and I didn't get any feeling that there was anything above normal. So, most people on vacation this month, well, it's been very quiet so far this month. But I think they, staff's come back on the 10th, so you probably won't hear much till the 10th. The minutes are, I mean, the expenditure sheets are available all the time. All you have to do is call Doug and tell him what it is you need, want or desire and he will produce it and give it to you. So, we have, uh, they're available anytime you want to review them or deal with them. Motion to approve the minutes, I mean, the expenditures, I'm having a bad day though. I'm trying to talk ahead of myself. Got a motion and a second. Any questions? Any discussion? Here you none, all in favor say so by saying aye. Don't have any new business. I'm sure we got some, but we're gonna take it up next month. Old business, we're to a historical point in time in our history here today because we're here today to close out the US, to implement the USDA loan and close out the temporary loans. So, that has really been a historical moment. Well, I think we've been dealing with this now how long? Four years, five years?
Ten years.
How? We started this ten years ago. Not a long-term event, but today we're here to, to close out those loans and initiate our USDA loan. And to do that, our lawyer is here and our binding attorney and I'll turn it over to him to go forward with that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, that was the board. It is indeed a historic day. As Chairman mentioned, we're here to approve the issuance of the debt that will put in place the permanent financing for Phase Two of your school improvement program. That will finish out the $60 million improvements that the legislature approved and the voters approved, um, back in 2006, 2007. So, yes, indeed, we are at the end of, end of the line with this, um, with this overall financing plan. I think you've got a lot to be proud of. Y'all have achieved more with less than just about any other school system I've ever seen in the state. Y'all built some magnets and schools that long overdue and much needed. So, uh, it's a auspicious day and I think a very joyous day as well. What you have in front of you, and I've been over this so many times with you, I don't wanna belabor it and, and take up too much of your time, but you've got two resolutions in front of you there. So, a long resolution, a short resolution. What I'd like to do is kinda give you the broad parameters of those two resolutions and I, I believe your financial advisor, Mr. Goldsmith, was first try on. Is he on the phone?
Uh, he's gonna be around.
Okay, he's gonna be on the phone in a minute. He's gonna explain to you the, the financing, um, the financial aspects of this, but basically the longer the two resolutions, the one that's paper clipped is a resolution that, uh, it does two things. Number one, it approves and provides all of the, um, qualifications, includes all the documents that are necessary to put in place the, um, permanent financing for the USDA loan. And that permanent financing, a hundred percent of the USDA money is going to be in the, um, principal amount of nineteen million, let's see, where is it? I don't wanna say the wrong number. Nineteen million, six ninety-seven, two hundred. That will take out the seventeen million, seven twenty-seven for any construction notes you issue. Uh, and we had the rolls over earlier this year because the, uh, that was complete. That will take out those notes and give you the final draw of USDA money that's available to you for the, for the, for the projects. Also in this resolution, there is an approval of the refinancing of your 2011 certificate certification. If you'll recall back when we did the Phase One financing, USDA required four million of that be done privately, that it be placed with a, with bank. BB and T stepped forward, did that for you. Those bonds, that four million, it's been paid down to about 3.6 million. It's about to be eligible for refinancing if you can find the savings. In the process of doing this, your financial advisor, and he'll talk about this in a minute, took a look at how many money could be saved by refinancing this in conjunction with doing the permanent financing for Phase Two. And it turns out you can save about $260,000, uh, in doing that, about $20,000 a year for the remainder of the life of the, of the 2011 notes. So, what is being authorized here is both the permanent financing of Phase Two and the refinancing of the, um, Phase One four million dollar piece. And attached to here, what you were approving, um, is an amendment to the facility lease between the county board and the Public Facilities Corporation. That facility lease provides for the payments by the county board. We had to amend that just to put payment schedules in there, as well as a supplemental trust agreement between the corporation and the trustee for the, for the bonds, for the notes certificates that will allow, uh, for the specifics of those certificates to be built into the overall trust agreement. So, it's a relatively streamlined, uh, set of documents based on what you're used to, um, approving and what you've approved in previous years. One of the things we tried to do back when we did the original interim financing for the, for the Phase Two projects is we amended all the documents to the extent we could and bank placed the table for all these. So, um, everything is pretty well set up and the, um, work that needs to be done for these is, is not as onerous as it has been. So, with that, is Mr. Goldsmith available?
Let me see, 'cause I'm like, Walter, are you there? Let me try it some more time. Oh, yeah.
I can try to get him on my phone. It's got a pretty good speaker.
Let me try it one more time, 'cause this is usually worked pretty well till this time.
Do you want me to try?
Uh, yeah, go here, but I may miss the number. And I'll get the number on. Let me try it one more time.
Total amount of what the USDA would be picking up in the total note? How much was that?
Which one? You mean everything?
Everything.
Well, let's see, we've got the USDA permanent financing from last go around, which was thirty, Doug, help me, thirty-eight million?
Thirty-eight million.
And then the, um, uh, nineteen million?
Actually, it was seventeen million, that's more, eight, ten percent less, and what they could give us, the whole thing, uh, ten percent less plus the other is close to four million that we're paying the other loan off of.
Yeah, total USDA is probably gonna be about fifty-six.
Goldsmith, the first try and advisors, please leave your name, number.
We were off our return call, it's at about sixty.
Yeah, we're close, we're close on that sixty.
If you will give him this call here.
Let's see, unless somebody on the line. Not yet. But we got, that was part of this, we did have a bill.
I can imagine. Yeah, he didn't say call him on his cell phone, did he?
No, let me do that one more time, 'cause at that time it was as if somebody was on the line.
Yes, Walter.
Okay.
This is Doug and we're at the board meeting, we're in the board meeting as a matter of fact. And Ben just told about the loans, so, uh, whenever you're ready.
Yeah, Walter, I kinda went over the parameters of two loans. Obviously, the, the USDA permanent financing piece is, is a known, a well-known quantity. Uh, I would think what the board's probably looking at from you is just that affirmation that revenues, um, are gonna cover that, uh, revenues, the sales tax is gonna cover that. And then secondly, on the refunding prospect, uh, I explained to the board that, that there's a, um, a call date coming up on the original four million, uh, that y'all were good enough to analyze that and determine that a, um, refinancing would save the district, um, a significant amount of money. Uh, it would stay with BB and T. We'd basically have a, a resetting of the interest rate with BB and T that would be a reissuing. So, we have to do all the documentation over again, uh, for both state law and federal tax purposes. So, you wanna explain those two pieces to them, I think that's probably what they're looking for.
That, that'll be great. First, thank you for letting me join by phone this morning. Uh, hopefully we've got a handout in front of ya. Uh, let's go to page two of that handout first and, and everybody will remember, we've been through this exercise multiple times. It is a pretty simple projection of your revenues that you're gonna have available for debt service, which is what page two is. And so, we'll review the revenues and then we're gonna flip back to page one, which are all the different components of the different loans that you have to pay out of those revenues. And the finding that you need to make is that the revenues are expected to be sufficient to cover the debt service payments. Uh, and recall that we've got, uh, multiple revenue streams. That's why there are multiple columns on page two. The biggest one is column A as an alpha, which is the one cent sales tax. And we shaded 2010, 11, 12, 13 and 14, because those are now, uh, in the books, uh, history. And so, we've got good, accurate data, which, uh, is nice. When we started this project, we were, we were sort of somewhat blindly projecting out into the future based off of some other taxes that had been in place. Uh, but what we've got is column A, historical numbers through 2014 and then projected numbers for 2015 and beyond. We assume that the sales tax will grow at half a percent. That's what you see in column B. Uh, and you'll see that historically, it, it, the growth rate bounces around. In 2014, it grew at 1.69 percent, uh, year over year. It's a pretty modest growth. And then in column C and E, we have the two other smaller revenue streams, the long amount of lost in sales tax, uh, column C, and in column E, the two mils of property tax that you've, uh, committed to dedicating to, to be available. And so, those three revenue streams, and I'll note that the, the lost and the two mils, we assume zero percent growth, uh, over, uh, the, the term of this projections, which I think is very conservative. So, you get all the way out to column G, uh, which are the total revenues available, uh, projected to be available to cover debt service. You can see it starts out at about 2.8 million and it will grow, uh, over time. Uh, and that column, uh, column G then gets picked up and carried back. Now, if you'll flip back to page one, that, that column becomes column A on this page. And the way we read this page from left to right is column A is the revenue available and then all of the other columns are the debt service, uh, that you'll have for each of the different components. Uh, and so, column B is a boy, is the big loan that we did, uh, the thirty-five million dollar original USDA loan. Uh, then column D is a dog, is the BB and T four million dollar. And you'll see that for the first several years, the debt service was right at $324,000 a year. Now, because of the refunding and lowering the rate, uh, you'll pick up, uh, right at $20,000 a year in savings. And, uh, and I wanna be sure that I don't miss this opportunity to say, this really came about because of Ben's good idea, uh, that we look back at that BB and T loan and see if there was an opportunity to, to refinance it and take advantage of lower rates. So, kudos to him for thinking of that and we're happy to run the numbers and, and show that you have good savings, uh, by doing that. And then, uh, column E is the USDA reserve fund that you have to, uh, fund up each year to the tune of $172,000 roughly, uh, and that's the reserve fund. If you ever missed a payment in the future, that's, that's sort of the emergency bucket, if you will. Uh, we don't expect that to ever be necessary. And then you'll see out in, at the bottom of that column E, in 2051, that reserve fund, assuming it's still sitting there, that you haven't had to call upon it, is used to make the last year's payment. So, it's, it's your money. Uh, and while it sits there, you earn interest on it, which is shown in column F. Uh, we assume a very modest 1% interest earnings. Uh, right now, you wouldn't be able to earn that, but hopefully in a higher rate environment, you'll, you'll outperform that. So, column G gets us the debt service on all of the loans that we have outstanding to date. Uh, totals of about two million, uh, one, two million, one to 2.2 million. Then column H, I and J is the new 2015 USDA loan that we're about to close on. Uh, and we assume the rate at 3.5%. Uh, that's the nineteen million dollar, nineteen million, six ninety-seven loan. Then column K, this loan will also have a reserve fund that you fund up over a 10-year period at $98,000 a year. Same concept, you'll see at the bottom of column K, that reserve fund is released back to you. Uh, it will earn interest earnings in column L. Uh, and, uh, all of that debt together gets you to column M as a Mary, which is the total debt service payments that you have to make, uh, revenue stream, that we forecasted out in column A. O is the annual shortfall or surplus. And this is an important point, uh, and I hope everybody will remember this in the coming years when, when Ben and I have exited the scene. Call us if you got questions, but, but what you're gonna see is that the first several years in column O, uh, you were running a really big surplus. The first year was 2.2 million and then you had $600,000 left over and then 644. And so, we show in column B, that sort of cumulative balance, if you will, is building and it, and it will top out at about seven and a half million dollars. And then look at column O, for 2016 through 2025, you've got deficits where the revenues are not expected to be sufficient to cover the annual debt service payment. And you'll need to start drawing down on that balance that you've built up. And, and so, the takeaway there is, uh, as long as you protect that balance and don't let it get consumed on operations or other, uh, projects, which may be a temptation, you know, four or five years from now, somebody may look and say, well, why, we got seven million dollars sitting there, let's, let's spend it. But remember that you're gonna need it to cover the shortfall years. Um, and also, as, as we all know, when we're projecting out increases in sales taxes and other revenues, we really have no crystal ball. There will likely be years when revenues go up and then years when they drop back down. Uh, and so, a, a good hedge for you all to have is to maintain that, that surplus balance and protect it, at least out until the, the revenues have really grown where you start to see an annual surplus every year and then you would look back and, and probably wanna spend some of it. Uh, and so, what these two pages are designed to do is to help you make the finding that when you look at the projected revenues using good conservative assumptions and you look at the projected debt service cost, uh, you feel that you can afford, uh, the debt service payments and that's one of the findings that you have to make. So, let me just pause there and see if there are any questions or comments that I have to add.
Walter, Richard.
Yes, sir.
We got a train. Is there any way that, and Ben might have answered, is we can legislate that we lock that fund balance reserve and it cannot be used to any other purpose?
Um, what's that column is a locked fund balance for, for column?
Restrictive.
Or restricted fund balance.
You could potentially do that, yes, sir. The, um, the landscape's changed a little bit. Um, the legislation that authorized this whole financing and sales tax was special legislation, as you know, for Dillon County Board of Education. So, what you would do is you go back and amend that legislation to further restrict the uses. And I'll have to look back at the, the original legislation. It may be there enough safeguards in place that we don't have to worry about it. I don't wanna speak without looking, refreshing my memory on it, but, um, you could do that. There's, a little bit of doubt has been cast on your ability to do special legislation like that. A case was decided a couple of years ago regarding the Dorchester County School District, which, um, severely limited the ability to do those types of legislation anymore. So, going back and amending it, there might be some, some concerns, but I think Dillon's in a unique enough situation that it might pass the test, even under that new, um, Dorchester County case the Supreme Court handed down. So, if that's something you'd like us to look at, we can certainly do it to make sure you're protected.
I really think you're right about that, Richard.
Yeah, 'cause I'm already getting hit on. I'm already having talk about that fund balance being there and being used to Phase Three, which I told him that ain't happening.
Yeah.
No, well, out with that fund balance.
Right.
It's very hard to explain to people the understanding of that money.
I agree with that.
And why it's sitting on that balance sheet. And I see.
Mr. Chairman, one thing that we, uh, one thing we might be able to help you with, if you didn't wanna, uh, you know, you could, you could restrict it as you were just asking the question, or another way is we could help you draft a policy that you would adopt. Now, there would be nothing to, to stop a future board 10 years from now from, from undoing the policy, but maybe if you had the policy formalized, written, you had approved it, adopted it, then when questions come in, you could just sort of refer people directly to that policy. And, and the policy would be sort of a two or three-page document stating, here's why you're maintaining the balances, sort of this model would be attached to it. Um, and, and so, you know, people would have an easy document to go back to, to answer questions if somebody comes to you and says, hey, let's spend that money.
But that still won't stop them from changing the balance.
That's exactly right.
You put it in the restriction fund balances.
Yeah, that's right.
Yeah, and of course, we've got is your second, the second, um, the shorter of the two, um, resolutions is the resolution that, um, uh, you've been a budget every year. Nothing binding here, but it's sort of, y'all are making a moral commitment to, to pay this. This is something the USDA is, is requiring. But I think, Walter, I think what the chairman's looking for is something that'll take it out of the board's hands. That will put it, you know, above their ability to, to spend that money. We can certainly look at doing that.
It protects the people that have signed this later lives on this money.
Stephanie's looking at me real hard.
Richard, I think for the community, it'd be well for this board to adopt that anyway.
I agree.
So, they know you've done the right thing. Legislation can also be changed too. So, legislation won't pretend to either, but at least this board, as it stands now, has done the right thing for the, uh, you know, to respect the wishes of the community and safeguards. It would be the first step, I would think.
I agree.
Richard, I, I pat you on the back for that, because that really does need to be done. If you do it in a manner that requires whoever this board might have to be, and where they've got to go before the public and get it approved by the public, you're gonna stop it then. You know, and so, if we can do that.
Is there a way to do that?
I guess Ben can tell us or somebody can. But you know how difficult it is to get something through.
Well, I know how easy it is to tap that fund balance too, when you need it.
Especially when we ain't got it. We've done our job.
And it's gonna hurt a lot of people if anybody goes into that fund balance and you get bad times.
I could certainly, I could certainly, uh, through Mr. Broome, let y'all know what, you know, our analysis of the situation is on the legislation. We'll certainly draft something more explicit, which y'all are creating a policy that that would be restricted and cannot be used for any other purpose.
Okay, let's do that and, uh, and review that at the next meeting. Is that everybody okay with that?
And I guess, Walter, the second item is the refinancing of 2011, the four million dollar piece. Is that, did you provide any information on that or is it?
Right, so, uh, let me refer you back. I'm sorry, I just got off the wrong page here. Uh, if you'll look at column D as a dog on page one, you'll see that the debt service drops from $324,000 a year down to $306,000 a year. That roughly $20,000 a year in savings, uh, over the life of the financing will total $356,000. Uh, and that's just simply interest that, that if we did do the refinancing, you would continue to pay BB and T a higher interest rate than you're currently paying, uh, which is 5.19% by refinancing, you lock in a rate at 3.88%. And, and those, uh, interest savings just benefit, uh, the board that you can use those as you see fit. So, we would certainly recommend that you move forward with that. There's no reason, uh, not to do it. And the savings that we projected are after you've paid the cost of issuance, so those are true, uh, savings to you. We've still got some, some logistical details that we're working through in terms of survey and title insurance and things like that, that, that may, uh, tweak the savings slightly, but, but at the end of the day, you'll still end up with nice, healthy savings.
Do you need a motion?
Well, that's part of the same, that is approved in the resolution within, so you're approving both of them in that larger of the two resolutions. Yes, sir, a motion and a second, a larger one too.
Formulate the motion.
Uh, we, we approve the, uh, resolution. Uh, it's presented, the refinancing and refinancing resolution.
Okay, everybody understand the motion? I'm making a motion. Got a motion, a first, got a second from James Cal. Any discussion on this? Any questions are welcome. I can imagine how confusing it is. Okay, we have a motion, a second, no further discussion. All in favor say aye. Any opposed? John?
Agree. I think you were doing, I think you're doing both boards at the same time. You wanna separate and get the other board to do it separately.
I would recommend two, two both. Yeah, and I'll, and I'll present the same thing to them. But there is a second, um, resolution. This is required by USDA. It's the shorter of the two, it's just a one-pager. Uh, Mr. Chairman, USDA, as they have in the previous financings, even though this financing is subject to annual appropriation, USDA wants some statement by the board that every year you're gonna look at this and if there is any shortfall, you can do your best to appropriate. Uh, so, we've included that to satisfy Mr. Hudson's requirements. So, I would offer that to you for... So I would offer that to you for approval.
Okay, that would be the motion.
Yes, sir.
Just like you stated. Do I hear a motion to accept? First. Second. Any discussion on that motion? Everybody understand what we're doing? Okay, all in favor say so by saying aye. Any opposed? Yeah, I've already had some activity on our balance sheet looking at those figures and seeing those fund balances. You know, it's easy to grab what's not yours. And it's hard to explain to them when it ain't there.
Yes, well, I don't know if y'all want it. Mr. Chairman, can I now turn to the Public Facilities Corporation? This is, anybody wants to see if this is the resolution of Public Facilities Corporation Board who are kind of continue to serve in this important capacity and to be here today. As y'all know, this whole transaction requires that Public Facilities Corporation be the issuer. They're the counterparty to the county board with the leases that ultimately revenues which pay for the facility. So in addition, y'all approved the transaction, they have a resolution before them to approve the transaction. They're basically reviewing the same documents that y'all have reviewed. They're approving, as you can see on page two, again, that amendment to the facilities lease, which is between the county board and the facilities corporation. So we have a trust agreement under which these two issues can be issued. A lease revenue note, again, Mr. Huck and USDA require that on top of all this, there is an actual note that can be put in the file or can be identified by USDA. It doesn't create a new obligation, it just basically restates the obligations that are already embedded in the documents that they're approving and in the certificates themselves, which are the debt entrants. So to the board, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, we offer this to you for approval for both these transactions.
Motion to accept.
Yes, sir.
Motion to accept.
Okay.
You got anything, any discussion? All in favor?
I need to ask, how many members of your board do you have? Okay, so you've got a four.
Yeah, I've got four.
Mr. Chairman, that's all I got.
Before we sign these documents, are we going to sign them afterwards or what?
Well, I have got, if I can just take a second, I have got just the resolutions for y'all to sign, so if I could just pass this one as a signature of all of those.
Walter, are you still there?
Yes, sir, I'm still here.
Do we need any more information or data from Walter? Ben, do you need anything else from Walter?
No, no, sir. Let me just let y'all know that these may close on two different dates. The USDA has to close by, Stuart, what's the date? This matures August the?
After my holiday.
August the 20th?
Yeah.
Something like that. We're going to close this one pretty quickly. The refinancing of the BB and T note, they want an updated survey and Mr. Broome is working to get that. It'd be nice if we could close them both at the same time, but we may have to stagger them if we don't get the survey, just that one place. And who is the secretary? And we'll work with Mr. Broome to schedule a document signing for, yes, ma'am. And Mr. Chairman, as I, I'll try to come back to a meeting when y'all want me to to present a resolution for the fund balance and also some suggested legislation that could be introduced this coming term to take it out of y'all's hands.
Okay, that's our next step. Any questions of Ben before he exits? Doug? All right.
Thank you all.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Rick.
Thank you.
All right. Any questions on anything we just went through?
I want to say thank you to Ben for coming up with the proposal to refinance that BB and T loan. That was a tremendous lead. Thank you, Ben, for that 20,000 a year. Yeah, you really liked that, Dr. John. All right, next thing is the workforce update. Because of time restrictions and all we've got to do today, I didn't invite the development board in. I will do it next time. Dr. Kirby's here who has followed this project from start to where we are today. The largest update that I have, and John, you may be able to go farther than that, is that the equipment money is intact and is at Northeastern Tech. They have received permission to fund that $300,000 worth of equipment for the training program to be done at Dillon County Vocational Center. That is intact and in process. Now, John, you may be able to tell different than I can on this because there has been a question about who's specing the equipment and when it's going to be speced and our biggest concern is what kind of electrical system do we have to install to handle it?
I'm under assumption that's under Northeast Tech specs, which would be the same as these state procurement. That'd be pretty similar.
Well, I understand that they are working with Wyman Gordon and other industries in Dillon County to make sure that the equipment that we purchase for this project is accessible or applicable to other industries, not just Wyman Gordon. Is that your understanding too? And I've been with Jerry on that. Jerry's not able to be here today. His mother's, I believe, having surgery and I know she's going to the hospital, so he's not able and matter of fact, I'll be rescinding his budget for him. But as far as I know, everything's okay and on go.
Yeah, I think the article in the Dillon Herald with the graduates, the recent graduates, that picture that was in there, I think it was yesterday or this week, shows the success of the beginning of the programs already for the adult population, not, you know, the taking advantage of this corporate being offered.
The Herald, there will be a very large ad and historical analysis of this project in the Dillon Herald today and the Chopper.
We've got 25 papers for you at my office. We've got 25 papers for you at my office.
Oh, okay. But I approved that and I went ahead of myself. I know I don't have all the authority in the world to do that, but it was really imperative to get that article out and get that advertisement out where we could start attracting people to this process and realize that we have this capability and that we are in the training scenario for applicants. They've already graduated 17 and out of the course. So the course is ongoing and we're hopefully going to attract a new class of people to attend the program. So I personally have been very excited and happy with all that's going on.
Yeah, I think it's been a great walk there from between Block Darlington Technical College, helping us with some of the issues in the area and Northeast Tech also, both of them are supporting that and the delegation and all parties concerned, but particularly those two institutions working together.
Because there still may have to be some training done in Block. We may not be able to do a lot. Any questions on that? I'll have a full rendition and update and everything, hopefully at the next meeting. All right. I'm going to skip the executive session right now and go to the school facilities financing update. Doug, do you have any update other than what we've just gone through?
All right, no, actually what we just did was so important, and I wanted to point out something too because then we had to redo that interim loan early, you know, and I was thinking that it just would have been good if they could have let us roll, you know, let us not have to do that. They waited and I guess that was what their rule really is. We had spent that $17 million before they let us do this. So, I mean, it wasn't, when we were thinking before, we wished we didn't have to do it. It was pretty much a requirement and we're going by their rules. So, you know, as it turned out, it worked out good and I'm glad. That's the big thing that we are past now to, you know, look forward to not having a problem like that in the future for sure. And as it turns out, that really wasn't a problem that we all wanted.
I've asked for the, Rodney, I guess you can hear me back there. I've asked for this before, a complete financial analysis of phase one and phase two, how we stand in it as compared to the budget.
I think we might have got out when we presented that, but it's been presented recently. I'll take Doug for phase two, yes, sir?
Probably in March, but actually you did, you gave me another thing where it was more up to date, probably a couple of weeks ago. Right, you talked about it last time, which was probably at the last meeting. He did give me something. And so we'll get, we'll get together and make sure we got what you need by, soon, real soon.
And that'd be real helpful considering some of the problems we got here. We seem to be growing. Any questions on financing? School facilities update? Other than what we got to discuss in executive action, I guess we would need an update on all the present situations.
Are we going to do, yes, sir, are we going to do an update from light as well, Doug?
I want that when we go in the executive session.
Okay. I mean, we won't do that.
Morning. We'll do this as brief. I know you had a full venue today. First on this, terms of Lakeview Elementary School.
Lake, excuse me, Lakeview Elementary School, the new canopy is in, the new sidewalk is in. They're now doing final grading and grassing and getting the rest of the construction material out and Lakeview Elementary will be complete.
So we're looking at, as soon as they get that done, we'll issue substantial completion on the remaining work, which doesn't affect any certificate of occupancy. We're all occupied out there, so we've got one piece of closeout and we're actively right now finishing up all of the closeout materials, so we should be able to completely close the book on that one by the end of the month or shortly.
When they open on the 10th of August, we're going to be out of there, right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, we'll be out of here by the end of the month.
Any questions? Y'all hearing anything from Lakeview Elementary? A lot of it's good so far.
They want a parking lot.
Yeah, they want a parking lot.
Other than that, I haven't.
I got it on the wish list. Okay.
Lakeview High School? I don't know of anything there that's been, that's closed down. Is there any questions or complaints?
It's football season. We're here no more than late.
No, that one's up and operating and so the only thing we'll have luck on that is the warranty inspection of eleven months.
One thing, Mr. Chairman, Doug and I'll need to do this is to make sure that we include the cost represented in Stuart for the refinishing of the gym floor. That's one thing that we have to address with Stuart. How much was it? 60 some thousand? Initially, District Full paid for it and Stuart said, well, just look at it at the end if we've got the funds to cover it and USDA would cover it, so I think we'll be fine there.
Let me say this here on what Ben, just talking about things that we needed to do about this closing of this loan thing. One was, he talked about the survey and y'all will be familiar with this, but they do a survey after the job is completed and you have an actual surveyor like.
Local one?
Yeah, to go out and just look at the property and see what was the plan and was what happened and the banker and what is that and something's going on.
Some kind of report.
What exactly the kind of survey it was, but that's something I'll get with y'all on how it would be best because it would have to be on everything that we had in any square footage, which would be every job we had in square footage home saving up with the job.
Basically, this survey will show the perimeter of the building just to represent what's in place in terms of the actual built facility and property boundary and everything.
I don't recall on which property who did the last, but whoever did the last update for them is probably who we should get just updated again. It'd be relatively quick. But we'll look at that and go through and collect who did that. All right, Auditorium High School?
Auditorium High School, as you're aware, the district office is occupied. They're finishing up the landscape today. We're going to be doing a walkthrough on the final punch list in the district office and the auditorium today.
District office is done, we're going to auditorium today. And I think we've got a dedication on the 10th, 8:30 in the morning.
And all of you get your notice, you should have gotten an email from Polly Elkins. Let me present to you.
Polly, your.
Paula.
Paula, yes, sir. She sent one, I got one of hers taken.
I sent me and you that email, but then she asked me or emailed me and wanted me to tell the other, the rest of the board, the rest of the board members didn't get that, but you're going to tell them and I'm going to tell them again today and I will send you an email to remind you that it's going to be on 8:30 on August 10th, which is a Monday, and you'll need to get there at eight o'clock because the seating, I think they'll do it twice or something like that, to make sure you can get down and out of seat every time before you get, as a board member.
Eight o'clock, August the 10th, that and all the time.
I will send something.
Thanks. That's all that you have, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I broke the news.
Somebody had to do it.
And I had to say that the entertainment's going to be up.
Sylvia.
I'm talking to you.
Sylvia, don't need to do anything.
The piano is delivered.
Has anybody seen the piano?
Picture's in the book.
It's in the update.
Piano is onstage, so we are, we are close to finishing that up.
Because I very carefully uncovered it, very carefully raised the lid when I took that picture.
And then you brought it back up.
Yes, I did. And moved it out of the way.
So we're good.
Now, when is this to be on August the 10th?
This is the dedication, ribbon cutting and tours and just an overall look at the facility and the whole.
Is this open to public?
I don't think so. This is staff, it's like work, they, this is the first day of our teaching.
It was coordinated with teachers first day, so I think this is internal.
I could be wrong. If I'm wrong, I'll email it to you. And I'm pretty sure it's just.
That's it.
And you, your board, this board and their board. Any more questions on? Next on the list is the Lata 400 wing. I actually received earlier this week, and I have those for Mr. John's signature, I said, the final change order to close out the block for the Lata 400 wing. Final release of funds will, as you'll move into our other issue at Lata here shortly. Will be dependent upon what we receive next week as far as if the H patch is where it needs to be, as to whether or not we release the funds for phase two as well.
How much do we hope?
I think that 400 and some thousand.
400 and some, yes. More than enough.
More than you hope, sir. Any other questions on phase two before we get?
made such a push out that I've taken care of issues, they've been monitoring things along with JCI and Aon and trying to make adjustments. It's by no means perfect at this point in time, particularly in the admin area, John still got a lot of issues that he's dealing with, but we think at this point in time, the data that we've gotten from Triad seems to match the data that's being monitored on the engineering side. So we think the issues have been identified, at this point in time, it should be adjustments to the program. And they're working on that, I talked like yesterday and this morning with Triad, so their intent is to come this week, make those final adjustments. Hopefully that takes care of everything, that's what we're being told, and it'll take them about a week after that to get the final reports prepared. So we want, we want, number one, we want to see this week them show up, we want to see the doing and doing, what we all think it should be doing, they're going to adjust the set, the set points have been in a very narrow band for their monitoring, at this point, they're going to adjust their set points to make it more comfortable and so forth. Hopefully their actions this week address physical needs there, the next thing is we need to report from that.
Bottom line is, it's going to be 70 degrees in that building when they start screwing on the tent. You know, if this not, I don't think I'm going to go visit Lata no time soon. And I don't think any of us are going to be able to have a lot of stuff on activity and personal visits, because this is a building. If this is difficult to get it right up to the high line, how many years?
Well, June of last year is actually the start date, so it's a little over a year.
Yes, sir. And to think that they can solve it in another week? I hear set points and set this and set that, and all I know, the building's still hot. That's all they know.
And that's all.
That's all that matters.
The parents and the kids that's occupying that building understand the building is hot. I mean, we, we've been talking about this for a year. We've got a damn can here and we kick it here and we kick it just a little further and we're still hot. I wonder when the building's going to be cool.
If this is hard to regulate now, how in the name of God are we going to keep this building up for it? They're going to have to move in here all the time.
It shouldn't be after your problems are resolved, and that's in progress. That's what we're being told.
Well, we're mechanical issues, functional issues that have now been repaired so that the machine equipment will operate correctly.
But it still ain't cold.
Well, it's not, I'm, because we're saying, we're saying, we're doing a broad spectrum here, the whole building's not.
It's all part and parcel.
Yes, and it does absolutely not. I walked it forward, there's, there's about four areas that are not at the set points as of this morning.
One heat pump at the end of the car has been a problem the whole time, that's one target point, the other classrooms are going to be operating as they should, and RTUs, rooftop units, two, three and four. The exhaust we're getting there is not living ship. And we're being told that if they narrow it down, it appears to be a programming issue between Johnson Patrols and Aon, so they are going back through that information now. But all the components are there in Washington, so it is a matter at this point of tweaking that programming so the unit does what it should be doing based on the environment and humidity and the conditions that are coming in outside of it.
All of them, I would not use us as a marketing tool.
But to your point, Rodney, you said you got how many working good?
Sir?
You said you got how many working where you're supposed to be.
Well, at this point, I know of one classroom in the admin suite is where we've got issues.
But that's the one we hear about, the board member.
Yes, I'm sorry.
They don't tell us about the ones that's cool, they tell us about the ones that's hot.
I'm sorry, we're falling.
Qualify, qualify, repairmen, because we have, we've worked on this thing for two years.
Are they going to know who to call when it's cold?
Sir?
Are they going to know who to call when it's cold?
Well, once we get, once we get the, Triad has, has met the obligation of the contract and the system's functioning the way it should be functioning, then John and myself will need to sit down, and I'm assuming it's probably going to be Case, since they're the closest, to set up a service agreement, just like we did for, for the Dillon Middle School, we'll be doing it for auditorium and all those as well. Any other comments?
Anyway, we feel, again, we might look at some other folks with air, air and heat system in.
Absolutely.
I mean, that's my, my viewpoint.
I disagree with that, Bill.
No, no.
I've worked in my lifetime with qualified people doing stuff like that. Like I say, you didn't have qualified, but they wasn't, didn't seem to be qualified, truck shooters and repairmen.
We've had our challenges, absolutely.
Do you suppose by any imagination that this is the first one they ever put in? I think this is a simple process. It's a long time.
I don't know whether they've got one of these particular systems or not.
We need to learn something from this, Doug, because no phase three.
No more whale digging, huh?
We need to learn from this.
Pre-coalced the ketchup.
So much for green. All this gun's cost is green, so far, aggravation. Anything else? I guess we could carry it out for days. All right. Okay, anything else before I call for an executive session?